Obviously.
Yeah.
What it is?
Yeah, I'm calling the porter of Public King. It's five forty-five, Monday, April fourteenth regarding the closing of alley block twenty-two of Hickson Reynolds.
Block twenty-six, the O T R.
Uh, which one?
That's well, the minutes from the last.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm reading the wrong deal here.
There you go.
Okay. All right, it's the block twenty-six of the Wrights addition, I'm sorry. I was reading last month. Who?
Robert.
Robert. Oh. See. What was he picking on George? He was on Eagle last time.
I don't know the man, but everybody from here.
Yeah, that's the grandson.
Um, was it, was he brothers and Benny? Was it Benny's brother?
No, no, he may know, you know.
What's that?
Bunch, superintendent?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's Bradley's uncle, yeah.
Bradley Bunch's uncle, yeah, but it's so it's, oh, it's Benny Bunch's brother, yeah, that's what I thought.
Which one is it? What's your, what's your name?
Brett.
Brett, oh, it is Brett Bunch.
Mm-hmm. He's the new superintendent, yeah.
Oh, okay, cool, yeah, he's a, he's your old mate, he went to school.
Yeah. Brooklyn.
Yeah, yeah. That's the mayor's.
He what?
Give me a, bring a bread or a story, I'm sure.
Bear, I remember Benny, because I remember Bear kept together. He at one point worked for town four, I think, long time ago, years ago.
Hey.
Good morning. Really late for that, hurry up.
Doing good.
Sorry, I got. You are fine.
He's six-four now.
I'll be right, I'll be, you know.
Yeah, I'm out of there, it's right, yeah.
Already, already?
He a brother? Yeah, Billy's.
Over there.
Same.
I detect your school Joan superintendent now.
Who is?
Brett Bunch.
Did they hire him?
What they did.
I didn't know that, I knew he was, had applied. Well, good. Yeah, he'd been at Brooklyn, up there between Jonesboro. Well, good, I'll have somebody to pick on.
He still two foot taller than you?
Yeah, sure, that whole, that whole family.
Taller than Bradley.
Amazon, yeah.
I could never understand.
I own his size.
Yeah, I could never understand that, he was six foot six ago when he saw. How you get in this thing? You ever notice that? You ever notice that the biggest people got the smallest, like they're gonna.
Six foot six guy that weighs two, we got a panel about a small car.
Draw.
He'd be right back in that spot thirty yards.
And that style.
She said, when did you come out?
I'll be fifty in October, so. Fifty-six, seven, you're out here.
This is the house.
I hope you're saying. Yeah. Are you looking out, then you took the ticket?
I did, I texted, I was texting him the other day, uh, after sales.
Same.
What, you weren't in it? There's steel plates that go around.
No, I do it all. I'm playing this one for all the most important. But today, probably not, because I haven't even, I'm just now.
Oh, shit.
Okay. I had nothing in my brain. Yeah, this officer asked me, what about this case from a couple of years ago, I was like, yeah, I have no idea. Sure, it was important, a couple of years ago. You know. Because this really is. Because the thing is, I have a lot in whole resolution. I can tell when I said. I mean, I've learned a lot, I mean, I have been here for sure, a while, but still.
Did you know who said the people?
On that, we are always having a couple of fans.
Twenty years.
Not too long.
I'll have to go look at it. It was about forty some this way, like that, about half of.
He's already done more than turned out.
All over there.
If you're multiple times, you're doing great.
He wants more. Turn that well.
All right, if there's nobody here for block twenty-six on rightful township, I call this meeting to an end at five fifty-five. Thank you. This lady, the holder. So our pastor in here. Raymond Young gives indication.
All God will come as humble as you know how, thank you for your courage. Just glad to be here on the land. Jesus, now you pray, amen.
Amen. Plague of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America. And to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mayor.
Here.
Ginger Stewart here. Wendell Walker.
Here.
Jane Darley.
Here.
Stan Moran.
You're my guy.
Sean Simpson.
Here.
Dale Carruthers.
Here.
Raymond Patton.
Here.
Jim Ed Ransom.
Here.
Shane Hamilton.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Everyone had a chance to look over our previous minutes from April fourteenth.
Make a motion accept.
Motion accept, made it to last meeting with Jim Ed.
Second.
Second by Janie, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion key. All right, public comment, Mr. Jeff Lingo is here.
Good evening, I know a lot of you, some of you I don't, but my name's Jeff Lingo. Uh, own a couple of properties on Lincoln Street. I don't live in the city, but I did for a large majority of my life, graduated from Long Oak. Uh, lived out north of town for twenty-seven years. Uh, I'd like to thank Mayor McGee and City Council for giving me that opportunity to come and speak. Basically, what I want to talk about today is, um, the code process more than anything else, I'm aware of the permit process, but I'm looking for some clarity on the code process. Um, next slide, please. What I show here is a house that I bought on Lincoln Street. And it's not for an attaboy, or it looks good, or any of that kind of stuff, basically. I went through the permit process, I fixed the house up, and it's currently being rented out. So the permit process works, even though back when I did it, it was a different administration here, it was somewhat hard at times to get things done, just being totally transparent with you. But, uh, I tell them every time I see them, I'm glad to see he's sitting back here behind that mayor's seat, but, um. The house that I bought had a fire in it, they pulled the meter, and hence we had to start from ground zero, go back through with all the electrical plumbing, heating and air, everything that had to be checked out. Having said that, I just want to let everyone make this point, that between Oak Street and West Palm Street, two entire city blocks. There's fourteen or fifteen inhabitants that are owned by renters, by owned by landlords. One or two properties are all owned, that are owned by the people who are actually living in the house and paying for them. So it's going to be so important as time goes on, that we make sure and keep those properties up to code, or otherwise you got a huge problem. And that's what I'm seeing in some of the properties. Um, next slide, please. You walk out my back property on three thirteen Lincoln, that first slide is what you see in the back. First slide is what you see in the front, and by show of hands, how many people want to walk out and see that every day? I don't think anybody does. Mayor just told me about the first one there, the backyard view. He's got some things into action for it. But at the end of the day, I've read through the entire, I think, seventy-eight pages of code, a lot of it pertains to stuff that doesn't interest me. Uh, but some of it does, and we don't keep that up very well, because that, that first slide there, that grass wasn't cut all last year. And I think code says it's supposed to be eight inches high, and that's it. So for me, I want to see that end of town cleaned up, it's right across from the schools, it's not a good look, it just isn't. Um, I've had, from the property to the south of me, I've had cuss fights, I mean vulgar language that you wouldn't want anybody to hear, and kids playing right next door. I had to call the cops a couple of times, I checked with the police report, but they told me it was going to be, I had to sign some papers, I didn't have time to do all that, I was just curious how many times the police have been called to that. Um, there, there was a fire one day, um, I heard somebody frankly hollering help while I was down there working on the, on my house, and it got louder and louder, and I stepped outside, and one of the, well, the home's on fire. And smoke boiling out of it, and the little guy was holding the hose up in there, and he wasn't tall enough to reach the window, they already broke the window out, but we put the fire out. They took some of the furniture out, I think the fire department was called, I know it was, wouldn't think to. Um, but, you know, in, in all reality, the same thing should have happened there that happened in my house, we should have pulled the meters, been an inspection, made sure everything was okay. That didn't happen, the next day, people were backing that out, there wasn't no surf pro went down there, there wasn't nothing, I don't even know how they went back in it. So, the property I think now is up for sale, and I don't even know why, I don't care, it's none of my business, I don't have a dog in the hunt, I don't want the property, I've got enough to take care of. But, turn to the next slide, please. And that's the house that's next to my property, that has been vacant for five plus years. Um, and I'm sure that in that time, I mean, even before that, I, I'm just saying five plus years, because that's the only fact I know, I don't know how long it's been empty. But at the end of the day, it needs major repair on it, I can look outside and tell that the electrical's not up to code. And there's some deterioration on the, on the cornice around the house, and part of the roof is, as you can see by that slide, hanging off, some kind of flashing. But what I want to know is what do we do to say that's a condemned house or condemned property? Again, it's not my business, but what is my business, is if that's not vacant, I've seen people go in and out of it that I know don't live there. The thing catches on fire right next to my property, what's going to happen? Hopefully it gets put out in time, but if not, then I've got an issue. Um, I know how we got in the shape that we're in, uh, like I say, I've lived in this town a long time, my father fifty-plus years ago signed a petition to allow some trailers to come in that end of town. And you can't sit here and tell me in good conscience that over fifty years, we haven't had some issues with degradation of housing. Uh, so we need to make sure that our codes are kept up, and like I say, I think the property's up for sale now, it's the perfect time to do it, before somebody buys it and we go back through the same cycle again.
Right.
So what I'm asking for you guys is, let's, I want to know what the plan is, while the, the property is in this hiatus. Uh, so, again, if you remember, I said at least thirteen or fourteen out of fifteen houses are rental property on that two block area. So it's going to be a little bit more of a challenge to make sure that everything stays in line as it should be, because having rental property myself, it's a full-time job, trying to keep it decent. But we can't just say, well, it's, it's grandfathered in, or it's rental property, you can't do that, we got to fix it, now, and for me, now's the time to do it. So I don't want to stay longer than my time, but my closing statement is, and I know that it's the first time you've heard from me on this, you guys may need to talk about what you want to be, your plan on to be, I can come back next month. And I trust this man over here, you call me and tell me what's going on, well then, I'm good. But, uh, I don't want to go back through another issue where we don't fix that property up, it's just because I see it going further and further every year, yes, sir.
Is this the property that's just east of the elementary school?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. I feel you.
I feel you.
Yeah, I think you're the, you're the all-in-one for that group, right?
Yes sir.
Well, we, I promise you, man, I think it's going to get better.
Y'all know, you know who owns the property? Y'all know who owns the property?
Yeah, we know. But, well, now, he's just one of them, there's three or four other property owners, like he said, it's two blocks full of rental stuff. But, but we're sending guys, I'm getting guys, Tony and James, they're both going to be sent to school so we can. Matter of fact, we've been writing tickets this week for similar things. But it's, uh, it's pretty widespread, but I promise you it's going to get better.
Well.
If I had to come start doing it myself, we're going to.
Like I said, I've got a lot of confidence in you, and I know whatever you say you'll do. But my, my only concern is, in all honesty, is just the timing. Because the longer this stuff goes on.
Ah, yeah.
The, the, the worse it's going to get. And, uh, uh, there's a Mexican gentleman that's buying up some property and fixing it up over there, and it's looking really good. But, it's all got to be done that way, or it's just, and, and the thing about it is. We're spending untold millions to get a new school and keep our schools up. Is that the look you want?
Yeah, you don't want that, next to.
And not only that, I can say, but I can tell you how many times, I've even had to go over there personally and say, hey, y'all cut that language out, that kid's over there, cut it out. And they went on about the business. But you don't want that kind of language, and kids playing twenty feet from you, right away. So anyway, that's what I had, so let me know what you want to do.
I appreciate it.
I'll be waiting to hear from you on next steps. If I need to come back next month, I will. Uh, if you've got, if you've got a plan, then just let me know what it is.
I'll keep you, I'll keep you informed, and we'll, we'll get some changes made.
All right. Again, I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you. Comment now, anybody from the Lono County Library? Okay, uh, Fire Department Chief Justin Mittenberg.
Good evening.
I'm here.
First piece of paper should be my monthly report, we responded to sixty-two calls in the month of April, any questions over that? All right, the next order of business is turnout for the year, this is five sets of turnouts. Uh, we normally order these every year, last year a billing issue come up, so we didn't get to work last year, so we're kind of a year behind. Uh, this is the stuff we normally go with, and this is who sells it, so I'm asking for twenty-five thousand six hundred forty-two ninety for five sets of turnouts.
These are all budget, like y'all would. I make a motion to accept the twenty-five thousand six hundred forty-two ninety. Motion to Jim Ed to go with the twenty-six thousand six forty-two ninety for the turnout. Second by Raymond, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry.
Any more questions up?
Anybody? Thank you, sir.
Take your money and run.
Now, Public Works, Director Robert Sullivan's not, he's out working on line right now, so is there any? We do have the bid results from, uh. Our water line on the golf course. If I can get to it. If y'all have had a chance to look at it, the low bid was, uh. J and R. Now Palestine, they've done several jobs for us, matter of fact, they're doing our sewer line fixing start on Brown Street over there in the next, probably in the next week. Their bid was, that's the smallest they've ever seen. Five fourteen seven oh nine seventy-four. Is the low bid. The next closest was like five eighty something. Do we have a projection date on that, Mayor? I don't know when they're going to start, now they will have like ninety to a hundred and twenty days to finish. I make a motion accept a bid from Finar. Motion Jim Ed to accept J and R's bid of five fourteen seven oh eight seventy-four, yes.
Second.
Second. Dale, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carry.
Mr. Mayor, can I back up just a little bit?
Yes, sir.
On the street maintenance, um, there's an area on West Academy before the big ditch. Um, the bus, the buses run through there, and it's, the road is washed out underneath the asphalt. And asphalt hangs over a foot or two, um, with nothing underneath it basically to support it.
How far down?
It's, it is, basically, if you're going, if you're going west, on West Academy. It's right, before you get to the big ditch, it's right on the right-hand side, and.
Branch to the big ditch.
Yeah.
But half the ditch.
Yeah, and I'm afraid if a bus gets over there too close, it's going to.
Well, we're, that's, I was going to get somebody to look at that, I'd love to, from branch on down to the ditch. We're fixing to get with Sean and take that pipe and drop it. And take the corner off if he still let us, and then I was wanting the concrete, that ditch. Maybe scoot it over a little, I know, we'll have to measure and see where a right-of-way ends. But I'd love to put a two concrete wall, you know, just to flume down from branch on down to that ditch. And maybe forty-five, where it get on out of there.
On, it's on West Academy.
Okay.
Yeah, it's right across.
From that big pipe, Sean.
Maybe, I don't know, a hundred feet, two hundred, a hundred and fifty feet.
Right down the property, right in there, old pine tree.
Yeah, kind of right there, well, before you get, before you get to that.
Yeah. I'll get a, I'll try to get a price on that, because we're going to start, I'd like to start on that soon as we get done digging out toward the ballpark. Can we just put some rip in it or something for now?
It's something, or somebody mark it, or something.
I'll see if we can go by there and get something in there to fix it till we can get to it. So, all right. Any other questions about Water Department, anybody? I know they've been fixing and, they've got a lot going on. Like I said, the sewer, uh, job on Fletcher Brown and Palm and all over there is supposed to start. I know they wanted to be here today, but we've had a lot of rain. So I figured it'd be next week. They're about to finish the paving, hopefully, maybe tonight they'll finish, or tomorrow night, they'll finish what they've got here in town. And as soon as I get a starting date on this, I'll call and let y'all know on the water line out in the golf course. And, uh, I think that's it. Okay, now, the Police Department Chief Keith Grant.
Evening everybody.
Hey, Luke.
Uh, last month we have, our officers responded to two, over two hundred and sixty-three calls, so busy, busy month of wide variety of calls. And you see my numbers for the month, so we're in a right, headed in the right direction with everything. Uh, there is some changes with our dispatch center, we've gone to the P S A, up in Cabot. There's a little bit of stumbling blocks right now with that, but we're dealing with it the best we can with our officers. Uh, we're making some changes at the P D, we hired a, uh, new detective. They will start hopefully Wednesday of this week, so you'll start seeing, uh, a lot more activity for some of our cases.
We had any, any visitors at the jail?
Uh, we've had a couple so far, uh, we are hiring two jailers, they go through psychological tomorrow. And once they come back from that, which hopefully by the end of the week, my goal is to get them started Monday, as long as all the paperwork gets back. And we'll have everybody go. And that's it, any questions?
Nope.
Thank y'all.
Sure, thank you. Now Parks and Rescue, Director Jonathan Curry.
How y'all doing?
Fine, how you doing, man, how you?
Um, what to talk about first? We, uh, we're looking at state, looking, trying to host a state tournament, it's not looking to, uh, too good this year. We're still in the Babe Ruth sanction, and, uh, you know, we've always been able to host at least one, but, uh, looks like this year, they're going to try to have them all at Bryant. That's just, you know, hearsay, but, uh, but we, but we're going to have a month full of All-Star tournaments in June. And, uh, I've already been getting contacts, you know, from surrounding towns, Cibley Hills, Wynn, you know, DeWitt, Marianna. I'm trying to get as many as I can here, so we can have, maybe bring some, some, uh, concession stand money in with them, so. But, uh, but still raining quite crazy, had it canceled tonight, um. What I'm starting to kind of look at is, in the offseason, we have a machine to plug in and sand, and we're going to do that, do that a couple of times in the offseason. For the fields, you know, you poke hole in the ground, and then you put a sand in, and hopefully that'll help, you know, next year not having so many games canceled. And, uh, and I'm bringing in a load of red rock, and, uh, hopefully that will help too, it's, it's, we haven't had any couple of years, so. That will definitely help the field soak up the water and maybe be able to play more games next year, so. We've got three weeks left in, uh, in, in league, and then we'll start all the All-Star tournaments coming, so. And we'll do four, doing four All-Star tournaments in June, so.
Awesome.
So, uh, I really don't have anything else, y'all any questions?
While I'm thinking about it, I need to ask y'all permission. Uh, we sat down with Integrity today, he was here a few months ago, to talk to us about lighting, like for the fields. And going to LED lighting upgrade and all of our stuff. And, uh, he brought me back figures on all that. Well, a block grant just opened up, and it's, it's non-matching, we won't have no match. But we can get up to two hundred thousand dollars. And I just need y'all's, I guess blessing to, I'm going to go see if we can get, I don't know, try, I don't know that we'll qualify, but.
I make a motion to apply for a grant for anything for our town.
Jim Ed, make a motion for me to go ahead and apply. Motion Wendell, second Wendell, everybody's, everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry. Now, we're going to try, I told him I'd take the flashlight if we could get it. Let's see if they got some, we need to see if they got some turf grants.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, maybe we'll get in. We're going to try to, just see what we can do, I'm meeting with C A P D D in the morning, so, see what we can get going. All right, y'all, if I got any more question? All right, thank you, sir. Uh, Community Center Director Mike Brown.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the month of April at the center, you're still hanging around the nine hundred member mark. Uh, I think we'll go up soon as, uh, baseball and mosquitoes come out, uh, and they'll, they'll come back and do more, uh, walking and exercising. Uh, some things that, uh, I'm going to cover with events, uh, of course we have Baptist Health every month. A member of the month was Kevin Darker. And one thing that we're going to do is, uh, Emergency Preparedness Fair this Saturday. We're going to make it an annual thing, and, uh, we put it together, uh, you know, we've had two pretty good storms, uh, lights out. Uh, all, all kind of stuff, and, uh, so I sit down with, with, uh, Antoine and, uh, other ladies, and. We come up with, let's have a fair to let people know what to do and how to do it when, uh, when, you know, we don't have lights or when, when the sirens goes off. And some interesting things, when I got with Justin, I said, well, Justin, I know we've got three, uh, safe rooms. Uh, but actually in Longo, there's four. Uh, the school, I think, uh, when they built a, a new primary school, they put another safe room, so there's two, two at the primary school, one between middle school and. Uh, one at the high school, and, uh, so we put this together, citizens can come around. The, uh, Fire Department, uh, Police Department, we have, going to have energy there to come ask questions. Uh, we'll have some, some ideas on how to, how you keep yourself fed during, uh, you know, during power outages. Uh, so that's coming up this Saturday, like, uh, we got letters, going to have letters going out. Shit, if you hadn't got them, you'll be getting them, Tal Castman, uh, we'd like to see everybody there. Uh, like I said, we're going to make this an annual event. Uh, one big thing I've got is, uh, Resolution five one twenty twenty-five. Uh, and that's, uh, probably a couple of months ago, uh, part of the, it wasn't roof, but it's the siding on the building blew off. And, uh, the adjuster looked at it and, uh, got a price for, uh, I think it's fifty-five thousand to put siding, put. To match, I wanted it to match perfectly, uh, uh, it was a little fifty-five thousand dollars. And I think, uh, I know we've got a, have a, a resolution to, uh, in order to get this going, so we can waive competitive building. Uh, when, and if we approve this, it will take probably six, seven weeks more, so we'll be in, we're looking at probably close to July.
Right.
Uh, uh, you know, before we get started.
So I need a motion to put five one twenty twenty-five on the floor. I make a motion, motion Wendell to put five one twenty twenty-five on the floor, second by Raymond, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carry.
Resolution five dash one dash twenty twenty-five, a resolution waiving competitive bidding for repairs to the siding and roof trim at the Lono Community Center. Whereas a recent storm caused damage to the siding and a portion of the roof at the Lono Communities, Community Center, providing the need to have repairs made as soon as possible with property insurance proceeds. And whereas the City of Lono has received a qualified proposal from Rain Tight Roofing, Inc. to make the necessary repairs to the roof and siding. Whereas the city has determined that the quote and the approximate amount of fifty-five thousand one hundred and ten dollars will be covered by insurance proceeds. And whereas the City Council has determined that it is necessary and in the best interest of the citizens to accept the proposal from Rain Tight Roofing, Inc. attached here to is Exhibit A. And to waive competitive bidding for the same due to the need to make the necessary repairs in an expeditious manner. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Lono, Arkansas, section one, competitive bidding is hereby waived and the quote attached here to you is Exhibit A for siding and roof repairs in the amount of fifty-five thousand one hundred and ten dollars for the Lono Community Center is hereby approved. And the mayor is authorized to take any action needed to complete the purchase. Section two, an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this resolution being necessary for, for the preservation of the public peace, health, and safety, shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage and approval.
Okay. Motion accept was just a resolution, motion to accept by Sean.
Second.
Second by Dale, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry. Now you tell them to get your metal ready. Thank you, sir. All business. Now we still have to pass this ordinance on the alley, Mayor. The ordinance on the alley. Yeah.
It's in.
It's after the solar thing.
Anybody questions about the solar array?
Yeah, I'd like to know how to read it.
Well, that's, yeah, we was going to get, we got to get that broke down some way, see if we can.
I'd like somebody to stand there and explain to me, you know, it says that, you know, estimated this and actual this, and estimated this and actual this. I'm not an electrical engineer, so I don't understand this stuff.
Well, and that's, you know, when they first found, they were just reporting kilowatts and stuff, I said, well, nobody knows it, they don't know money. They don't want money here, putting in every month, so.
Can we not get somebody down here? I mean, do all of y'all understand it? I understand, I understand, we lose money. Well, then I'm, I'm not taking y'all's money.
I just want to know what impact it has on the community. What's it doing for the community? I, I don't know if we even know that, we don't even have a number on.
Paying our electrical bill.
But what is, how does that translate into savings for the citizens of Lono?
You have to get your own solar panels. Then we have funds to do other things with that we're not paying electric bills.
Yeah, but how much is it bringing in?
That right there is an estimate of what we're getting every month off of it.
Last year brought in eighty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars.
They only built, they didn't build the panel to pay all of our electric bills and some things you can't offset. Like the street lights and stuff like that, they won't let you, cause they're a flat rate fee. But they build a panel to offset the main things that we could. Based on what the rates were at the time when the panel was designed.
Which the majority of it goes to the water and sewer.
Correct, cause they use the most.
Pump stations, the wells, the, you know.
But they'll, I mean, those people that we pay, they will come down here and.
Well, I mean, that's why I wanted to ask last month to get it broke down, because. If you look at what we make a, a yearly payment and what it's bringing in every year, I mean, that's not good business.
So let's break it down and show the people.
On this several times. It's, it was more than just solar panels, which ninety percent of it was for the solar panels. It might have been a one-time thing, you had to have the racks, you had to have the grid to hook up to energy. I mean, it wasn't the, but all this other cost, but now they bought air conditioners. All that power saving stuff on our, on our pump stations that we had to scrap.
How much was the note? How much did they borrow?
It's, well, we owed, we owed at the one time, two point seven million. And we've made four payments. So, we got sixteen more years. See, being that it was green, they let them go out twenty years. To me, you know, the whole time, twelve years I was here, I don't care if it's fire, police, it didn't matter. I'd pay it off in five years.
And don't the panels have a ten-year lifespan?
Well, they, the people that put them in, said right there and told me ten to twelve years.
And then we paid for a new round of panels?
Facebook and all that'll argue twenty or thirty years, but.
And we got a sixteen, it's gonna be sixteen years before we pay it off, but we gotta pay for more panels in the next.
Next ten, probably.
Is it doing what they said it would do?
They paid us actually extra money last year, it overproduced or whatever and we got like a three thousand dollar check on top of it. I haven't seen that this year.
When you're making three thousand, you, you losing seventy, that don't add up.
If it's a sixteen million dollar payment.
Committee that put that in here told me that I paid.
Which to me, it was a, it was a package deal, they put thermostats. Which most of it wasn't worth two cents, but to me.
Two point seven, yeah.
I think we need to get the guys to come in here and answer y'all's questions.
Oh, I do too, but I think however you cut it, we're losing money, whether it's five thousand or a hundred thousand.
Can you scrap them and make, make something out of the place?
They said, can't you sell them, I said, well, if they look at what they're doing compared to what they cost, who's gonna buy them?
And these are, are, these are fixed panels, aren't they, they don't rotate, they don't rotate. I always wondered why they were facing north and south instead of east.
Which if you get those that rotate, they're.
Do what?
A lot more expensive.
Cause I understand each of them has to have a motor that, that makes them, makes them move. I mean, is, is, is the whole thing at the end, when all of this is done, that. Our, our out, electrical output for the city's just gonna be tremendous, is that what the whole thing was for? I mean. Well, I don't know, I mean, I came into this thing kinda blind.
We weren't here when they put them in, was Janey. If you went to investor and you invest two point six million dollars and you lost seventy thousand dollars that first year, you would get fired.
Solar and wind at one point was the be-all and end-all of new energy, they were gonna scrap coal and, and petroleum, they were gonna scrap that. So everything was, so there was a lot of money pushed into that sector through the government, well, the government's not pushing that money into the sector anymore.
And I understand that there's, you know, there, some of that's gonna happen, it eventually is gonna happen, some of it. I'm not gonna drive an electric vehicle, but you'll, you see more and more homes that have the solar panels on the roof.
The majority of people that's put several in that I've talked to is not pleased with them.
I know, I, I sang with me, sang with me.
And which, I know, there's probably a hundred different companies and they may have their place, I, I'm not.
I'd like to have this guy in front of us, that can ask all these.
Have him here next month.
I, I think we should.
Well, he could answer any question you got, so.
I do know in their contract, there ought to be a non-performance clause somewhere for a company that big if it doesn't do what it said it was gonna do.
But we can get them here next month, that's alright.
So you'll take care of getting him here?
Yeah, we'll get him here.
Okay, I think that's good.
Alright, on to new business, ordinance number eight twenty-five. Ordinance vacating the alley running north and south through block twenty-six of, uh, rights addition.
Make a motion, we put first reading on for.
Motion first reading with Janey of number eight two five. Second by Sean, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carried.
Ordinance number eight twenty-five and ordinance vacating the alley running north and south through block twenty-five OT rights addition to the town of Lono, Lono County, Arkansas. Whereas the petition was duly filed with the City Council of the City of Lono, Lono County, Arkansas on the twenty-first day of April twenty twenty-five. Praying the City Council closed the alley running north and south as described in the original plat, filed in the Circuit Clerk's office in and for the county of Lono, Arkansas. Whereas after due notice as required by law, the council has at the time and place mentioned in the notice, heard all persons desiring to be heard on the questions. And has ascertained that the alley running north and south through block twenty-six OT rights addition to the town of Lono. Has heretofore been dedicated to the public use as an alley, has not been actually used by the public as an alley for a period of at least five years. Subsequent to the filing of the petition and that all of the owners of property abutting the alley have filed with the, with their council their written consent to abandonment. And that the public interest and welfare will not be affected by the closing of said alley. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Lono, Arkansas. Section one, the City of Lono, Arkansas hereby releases, vacates and abandons all its rights, together with the rights of the public generally. In and to the alley which runs north and south through block twenty-six of OT rights addition to the town of Lono, Lono County, Arkansas. Section two, a copy of the ordinance duly certified by the City Clerk shall be filed in the office of the Recorder of the County and recorded in the deed records of said county. Section three, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage.
Make motion, accept first reading.
Motion to accept first reading by Janey. Second by Wendell, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carried.
Motion to suspend the rules, second, third reading.
Rule, second, third reading, title only by Janey. Second by Sean, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carried. Title only.
I'm sorry. I was looking at something else, I'm not paying attention, sorry. Ordinance number eight twenty-five and ordinance vacating the alley running north and south through blocks, block twenty-six OT rights addition to the town of Lono, Lono County, Arkansas.
Motion, second, third reading by Sean, second by Janey, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carried. Motion to adopt by Sean. Second by Janey, all in favor, say aye. All opposed.
Before we make a motion, maybe, have, have any of y'all had any complaints about the new leaf and limb people?
I haven't, am I, or?
You haven't? They don't know where Kayla Lane is.
Yeah, they're.
I mean, we, we've called several times, because people in back of us have asked me about it. And we, we've called them three times and they kept saying Taylor Lane, no, no. Kayla Lane, and we spell it out for them.
I'll take care of that.
See if you can, thank you.
Alright, uh, need approval to pay bill. Motion Jim Ed to pay bills. Second by Sean, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carried. Island Zoning Commission meeting is scheduled for Monday, May nineteenth at six P M. Uh, City of Lono, they closed Monday, May twenty-sixth for Memorial Day. Jim Ed, second by Raymond, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carried. Thank you very much.